We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call attendance, please, Marty.
Mary Dorofsky.
Here.
Mary Dorofsky. Patty Jacobson. Laurel Lee. Here. Amy Huffman. Here. Naomi Muffender-Crawley. Here. Scott Barton.
Has the meeting been noticed to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to move forward after 6-1 to move 8-1, then 7-1, and then 9-4, right after 6-1, in order to accommodate some staff getting to some activities. Is there a second on that?
A whole second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, motion carried. At this time, we have public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board with something that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to community engagement, and we have Luann Meyer to present our program on Strengthening Families that's available in Jackson County.
Well, thank you for the invitation to come and speak about Strengthening Families. It's not hard for me to say yes to talk about this program because of the support that we've had for it from the community as well as the families that have attended. So I'm obviously glad to share more about it as a way to get the word out. Strengthening Families is an evidence-based program that is used nationwide and is highly recommended as a prevention for high-risk behaviors program. A lot of the focus of discussions in the program are on family stress, the alcohol and drugs use and misuse, suicide prevention, as well as bullying. Some very serious topics, but it's a program that brings the whole family together and talks about positive and preventive ways to hopefully avoid these high-risk behaviors. I will be referencing "we" as I describe some of the things that we do, and the "we" includes all the facilitators that are a part of this program, because that's really what makes it go, along with the families, as well as our coordinator, who is Carla Gearing, and she is a health and wellbeing educator at Jackson County Extension now. So she coordinates the program and would be a very good contact for someone that would like to, you know, find out more information, and she takes care of all the data reporting and things like that. So we're very glad to be working with Carla. Now, she's been here about a year and has been through the program at least once, and so she really is getting a feel for how the program fits into our community. We offer two programs, one program for four- to ten-year-olds, and the other program is the 10- to 14. We participated in our first training in 2003. We had three individuals that attended that training, and that was for the 10- to 14, the program that is really, really common throughout Wisconsin. And then, in, I believe it was around 2010, because we were getting a lot of interest and questions from families for younger children, we said, "Let's go for it and see what we can do about getting a training for that." So working with a lot of our partners throughout the county, we were able to bring trainers in, and we held a statewide training in Jackson County, and had probably about 35 or 40 other educators from Extension that attended. And it, I think, has been the only training for that age group, so we were really glad that we could get on board with it. And then in 2017, the program for 10- to 14-year-olds was updated to mindfulness-enhanced Strengthening Families, which we, you know, know that mindfulness is incorporated into a lot of things throughout our school as well as our community. And so that's the program that we use now for the 10- to 14s. We run the two programs concurrently, so, you know, usually we have enough registrations that we have both programs. The four- to ten-year-old program is a 10-week course, and the 10- to 14 is a seven-week course. So you can see where families who sign up, it really is a commitment of coming 10 weeks, seven weeks, but for many of the families, when it comes time for that time to end, they're like, "Oh, can't we just meet for a couple more weeks?" You know, "We want to keep coming back." And so we can see how the program early does fit in for our families. A session looks like we have a meal together to start with, and that's one of our first lessons for families, is that a family meal is, you know, one of the best ways to have communication, whether you've got four-year-olds at the table or 14-year-olds at the table. And so we have the meal together. Then the first hour, we have group learning, and the parents are in their session, and the youth are in their session, and that gives them a chance to communicate and interact and have fun with other parents or other youth. Then the second hour is the family time, and the families come back together as a unit. They do activities that support the learning that took place that first hour. These are also activities that they can take home with them and try over the next week. And so that is certainly one of the strengths of the program, is families coming back the next week and having a time to share and say, "Wow, we used this activity, and it worked out well for our family," or "We had a little problem with making it work for our family." So does anyone have ideas on how we can make some changes? So some of the strengths, along with the multi-session format, is that all family members come. And if you have children who don't fit into one of the age groups, we have childcare or youth activities for maybe some older elementary students who are coming with their families. But the whole family is invited to come. We've had grandparents come who are caring for their grandchildren, but also who are coming with children and grandchildren, because they're a part of maybe living with a family, or they do a lot of childcare for the family. We've also had foster families come and bring their children, and they meet the parents of the children that they're fostering, and they meet together at Strengthening Families and go through the program together. So it's just a chance for everyone to come together in a safe place. Some of the other strengths is that we really have an experienced group of facilitators. As I mentioned, they're a big part of the program, and we're fortunate that several of our facilitators have been on board for several years. The other positive is that there are trainings that continue to happen throughout the state, and so whenever we hear of a training, we are looking for maybe someone who has expressed some interest and get them sent to training, so they can come back and work with our program as well. The support of the community has been great in keeping our program free for families. We've had use of the facilities. Right now, we're meeting at Red Creek, and so we've met there. I don't know, how long's that been open? Three years now?
About 16, so yeah.
Yeah, or something. Anyway, so we started at Red Creek, we've been at Gebhardt, we were at the Boys and Girls Club, we've been at churches, we've been at the old Boys and Girls Club and the new Boys and Girls Club, and we've been in some of the other communities as well in the county. And we also have grant funds that we've had available locally as well as statewide, and we've also had some national grants that support this prevention program. So that has really helped us keep this program going since 2003. And our next session actually begins next week. It's a session for 10- to 14, and it will be at Red Creek. So there is an opportunity, if anyone knows of a family interested, they can give the Extension Office a call, and it starts at 5:00, and that's next Tuesday on the 25th. So I'll take a break and see if there are any questions that anyone has.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'd like to just remind the board that this is a program that you often suggest as terms for an early readmittance and an expulsion order, but then also with our new behavior deferred expulsion program, that gives us the little teeth in either choose to come before the board for an expulsion or go over to Gebhardt for that 45-day program, and your family must participate. And so I wrote down that date. I hope you've gotten some calls from some kids that we've recently moved to Gebhardt for programming, but I see Tammy back there, too. We will make sure of it. So we so appreciate the services that you guys provide and the fact that it is free to families, and such competent and caring and kind facilitators makes all the difference for those families. So we're really, really appreciative of the great work that you do.
We're always looking for community programs that we can partner with, too, and we just appreciate that. And knowing the program firsthand, I think reducing the life loads of the families is one of the key, that they can come and not worry about what they're going to feed their family for supper, or what, you know, they know their children are going to have a rewarding experience as well. And so that really drives the family just to come, that "I know I'm going to be taken care of, I'm going to be listened to, and I'm going to feel better when I leave." And I know firsthand that has made families feel very welcome and happy to participate. So thank you, Luann, for all that you're doing. Patty.
Yep, I just wanted to say it's not just for families with problems, either.
No, oh, no.
I just wanted to mention.
Yeah.
I thought it was not impressive that you were finding skills in anybody.
Yes, yeah, it is open to anybody.
Before they happen, we have families came to our last session, and they were at the meal, and one of the older girls started not feeling very well, and so mom and dad said, "Oh, I think we're going to have to go home." And they had a little guy who was about, he was about five or six. He's like, "I can stay, I'll stay, and then you come back and get me." He didn't want to leave. He was really upset that he had to leave early. And they said, "Well, we'll be there till next week." So then he was like, "Okay." He said, "I have to go."
And I think Patty's right, we need to stress that it is a prevention program.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we welcome people to come and visit. We, you know, maybe after the first week or so, where families kind of get comfortable with the format.
And trust.
And we have family coming and visiting. And so, you know, it's just a chance to be in on, you know, discussions that are going on or seeing what you are doing in your group, so thank you.
Thank you. Oh, another question.
I have just a question, Luann. So is this available, because I have kind of a broad program across the state, is it available through any Extension Office or just specific?
It could be. I'm not sure. It depends on if they have people trained that are currently in the county. A lot of the counties do have people, and they're, you know, community people that have come on board. So I'm not just sure I can't say out of the number of counties how many have it, but a lot of them do.
So would it be called the same thing?
It would be called the same thing. 10- to 14, yes, families 10- to 14.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Luann, when Jackson County got the young program, that was due to so many Head Start families needing parenting classes and a community-based thing. So, I mean, Jackson County really stepped up, and other programs helped out to make it happen.
Yes.
And send people to training and things like that. So it very well could not be in other communities, or it could be, yeah. But I know Jackson County was pretty unique.
The 10- to 14 might not be as wide and available, but the 10- to 14 may be more so. Did I say that right?
Yep. Even if it wasn't right, we got it, okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you again, Luann. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and next we have Jay, Jay Wyman, on handbook updates.
So earlier this year, when I first started, Shelley had asked me, "Could I take a look at the handbook for the sports and extracurricular activities?" So I started off by taking a look at what other schools in the area in the conference had done with theirs, and talked with those ADs, and then we had a, we asked for community members to come together and get some input on changes they would like to see made, and some people that were at that meeting are here tonight also. So we got some ideas from them, and what we came down with is there were really two major changes that we wanted to make to the handbook. One of them was regarding the grade structure for eligibility, and so we went more in line with the WIAA recommendations for eligibility, and we had been going with a little more strict policy, so we changed it to align more with them. And the other policy that we changed was for any types of violations of codes, we felt that maybe the second strike was a little too strict, as it was, your second strike was a full year of ineligible, and so we softened that up a bit to give students a chance to come back from that. So in order to accommodate students with those things, we also implemented some structures for them to work their way back through community service. Another way that we're going to do it is offer some services at the school that they can try to get back on their feet a little better, and we want to keep them active in their activities rather than just having them sit out for a four-year. So those are some of the big ideas that we had at that, and so those were implemented into the new handbook as well as some other smaller adjustments.
Do you have any questions about those?
I'm wondering what is the newest grade requirement for participation?
It used to be that if you had one failing grade, you were to sit out for 15 days. The WIAA recommends two failing grades to sit out 15 days, and so we went from instead of one failing grade, we went to two failing grades. We decided that at one failing grade, there should be some penalty, so that goes to a five-day penalty rather than a 15-day penalty for the one failing grade. Those will be checked at the quarter and the semester, so essentially every sport season would be affected by, you know, they would be monitored by their grades.
Is that a school day or a regular?
It's 15 school days is what the WIAA suggests. So for what I had to write in there, if they are failing in the spring and their sport starts before school, we marked it as 15 days from their first event starting, in the assumption that they would have Monday through Friday school. So otherwise, that clock would start for some of them, you know, until several contests end, so that was the exception.
And how will we know if this is making a difference?
Well, that's a good question. I haven't been here long enough to see. I went with, I guess, just surveying with the other ADs, that was my best, you know, "What are you guys doing and what kind of results are you seeing?" The other schools were in the same thinking, in that it's better to keep kids actively participating rather than not. We also were seeing a few anomalies with grades. Some kids take online courses. We had an online course this year where they weren't getting very good feedback, so we had kids with Fs that really was not their fault, and tough to penalize that kid 15 days for something that, you know, was really nothing they could do.
I think it's good that you're recognizing, providing support to help them work their way back up is the key here, that, you know, you're helping them move forward.
Something else that Jay and I talked about a lot before we brought that group together and then since, as well, is part of the, "How will we know if it's making a difference?" Like high schools across the nation, so certainly not just a Black River Falls problem, but the percentage of students participating in athletics continues to decline, and we are right in line with the rest of the nation in that. However, we really felt that it had gotten to the point that there was more and more of a divide. Kids that had played athletics all the way through, get to high school, they'd find themselves ineligible one time and then done, not going to participate in athletics at all anymore. And so I felt there needs to be a significant perception adjustment as to what it means to be a Tiger athlete. Last year, we had a lot of code violations, and that wore heavy on the climate at the high school in general, through no fault of the staff, that was the students' choices by all means, but it really became a "out to get you" kind of mentality, and so we really wanted to be very touchy and just say, "We offer all of these fantastic opportunities for our kids, because research shows when they're involved in two or more extracurricular activities, they're more successful at college, they're more successful at career, all of those things." And so we tried to have conversation about how can we build up our athletes to the leaders we expect them to be, as opposed to catching them at all of the other things. And so Jay has done a lot of other things to do some leadership building at the high school in addition to this work, and so how do I know it's working? I have received zero parents screaming at me over what they deemed to be their child mistreated this year, and you haven't been lobbied for any, what is it? I can't think of the word.
Appeals.
Appeals, thank you. Sorry, the word is not coming to me. You haven't been lobbied for any appeals. So I think that we all want kids to be involved, and we all want them to be successful. I strongly believe that when you have success in your extracurriculars, success breeds success, and that carries over to the classroom, and the more they feel good about being a part of something, the harder they work across the board. And so it is important, I think, that we work hard to create that leadership opportunity where we can. And so would you talk a little bit about some of the other leadership things that you've intentionally done with the students thus far?
We started a program called the Athletic Advisory Committee, and it's, we had coaches recommend different young athletes, and so we meet together, and they get to put their input into, "What do we want to see different? How do we want things to change?" And so they're pretty excited about being a part of it, and so that's been kind of a neat thing. We were supposed to do our first Tiger Talk this last Friday, but Mother Nature didn't cooperate, and Tiger Talk is a way for students to come up in front of the whole school and kind of tell their story, or it's kind of like a TED Talk. So we want to invite community members as well as teachers to speak. We're going to try to do that once a month, so we're working to reschedule that Tiger Talk, so that's another thing that we're doing, trying to get the students more of a voice in their process. And just to go back to what Shelley had said, I had a young man approach me earlier this year, and he was clearly regretful for what had happened his past year, and he said, "What can I do? I want to play sports again." And he was serving a suspension, and I said, "Well, let's work on this." And so he started doing some community service for me, and he, you could tell, he got a little pride in what he was doing, and he was helping out, and he was making a difference, and I think he's come a long ways, and I'm glad that he's a part of athletics rather than just sitting out his senior year not participating.
To be honest, that student was going to graduate at semester if he wasn't able to play athletics. He was like, "I'm out of here. I'm not going to school in spring. I have enough credits, I'm out," and has chosen to continue on in school and taking other enrichment classes. He's doing a youth apprenticeship that he's being wildly successful at. It just really, yeah, that stuff matters a lot.
I think it's the one thing, too, that for a lot of kids, it's the one thing that helps them or motivates them to keep their grades up, is to participate in a sport, you know, and I just really like the shift away from kind of the "gotcha" attitude to, yeah.
Well, I think as an adult, it's easy to go, "Oh, it's only a year," but as a kid, a year is forever, right? And so, you know, sometimes a three-week violation is forever for a kid, so, you know, I thought we were being a little harsh, so.
You're driving away for them to.
Come back, yes.
Mr. Somban.
It could have impact on student grades and achievement. Why don't we put in a practice where the students have to take a grade sheet and chuck in with the teacher and actually have a conversation about their grades rather than just letting the computer spit out if they're eligible or not? So that's going to positively impact, you know, empowering the students to monitor their grades and talk to teachers as well.
That's a great point. Before that, Fs would be printed off and computer-generated, emailed out to everybody, and the kid could easily, like, not making eye contact with you, and now they have to take it, talk to their teacher, and then take it and talk to their coach. So they have to be the carrier of their message, which may sound simple and maybe like, "Well, that's the way it's always been before computers." That may be the way, but it's been a whole host of email exchanges the last couple of years, and so the ownership definitely resides more with them, which is nice.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Wyman.
So I wanted the board to, he doesn't have the, the whole handbook is not here, I'm sorry to stop you as you're bringing it, make it to the game, but he's also working with Don Jacobson to find out all the stuff that needs to be included in there. The board does usually approve the whole handbook. He has started operating under some of the new expectations, and so wanted the board to be aware of that along the way, and I know that two board members attended that conversation, but just wanted you to know that you approved the previous handbook. This is not the handbook in its entirety, but it might be nice if, did I put it in that item?
No.
I did not. Okay. So I wanted you to be aware that there's been all those conversations that have happened and that are moving forward in this direction.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have 7.1 Focus on Purpose, the social studies, sixth to eighth grade.
All right, so I have with me our social studies PLC leader from the middle school, Jeremiah Vangen, so we're going to tag team this a little bit, which will be great.
First of all, I just want to thank you guys for having us, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in and talk to you tonight, as well as your continued work for the kids of our community. So we'll start off just talking a little bit about our social studies team. A lot of new names up on the screen right now, Brian Schleifer and Todd Fenton, sixth grade, Colin Bersick and Jolene York, seventh grade, both new teachers, and then myself and Jordan Barth at the eighth grade. So a lot of, a lot of good people, a lot of new people, it's got its own advantages, and it's things that we're working past. What we're going to talk to you tonight about is the past work of the department, the current work that we're doing, some of the highlights, and the next steps that we'd like to take.
And there was a color warning that said, "1- to 1." It's different than that?
Well, it seems that it was.
All right, so our grade level focuses, the teachers who teach sixth grade really have a focus on ancient civilizations. When you move up to seventh grade, you get a little bit of geography as well as the history of Americas and Europe, more of sort of another world history class, and then eighth grade has a U.S. history focus.
So just to bring you up to speed about what the department had been working on prior to this year, we shared this a little bit when we talked about the elementary presentation as well, but in void of new state standards, the middle school teachers also dug into the National C3 framework, really talking about inquiry and how to use inquiry in the social studies classroom, spent a couple of years looking at that framework and really integrating that into their practices, also working on curriculum maps, looking at rewriting units and trying to build that inquiry and some of those processes and skill development into their work. They also worked hard on a 6-12 writing rubric, and so it was something that, similar expectations across 6-12, but the level of proficiency built on itself as time went on, because in the area of social studies, you do so much talking, speaking, reading, and writing about the content area, and so lots of writing pieces happen in social studies as well, and so having some consistency there with the format of an assessment. And then also working to incorporate more primary and secondary source documents, which Jeremiah will talk a little bit more about, and then similar to all the other departments, engaging in that vertical alignment work last year to, for each of the grade levels at the elementary, all of the middle school grade levels and the high school to really articulate what they are doing across the board so that we could have that vertical So then this year, the department has been doing some work that Jeremiah is going to share a little bit about, but just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on the standard work. So last month, the elementary team, you heard about their work digging deeply into the So last month, the elementary team, you heard about their work digging deeply into the standards that have been newly adopted by the state of Wisconsin. And as Jeremiah shared, lots of new teachers at the middle school for our social studies area. And so while it was our plan to dive into the standards this year with new folks at the building, four of them were all new to us and then one was in their second year with us. And several of them also teaching a new content area at the same time, whether it's math or ELA or science, something they hadn't taught before. We thought we'd give everyone a little breathing room for this year. And so our plan is over the summer that we will dive into those new standards with some professional development time and into next year as well. But they have been doing a lot of good work, so I will let you talk about that.
So up there, you've got the Stanford History Education Group site. And I don't, you know, I don't have my login right now, so I don't know how deep you can really get into it. But essentially, there's a push in social studies education to move more towards, as Steph said, primary and secondary documents. And this is an issue and resources are an issue all over the country. And so what Stanford University did is had people from all over the country come together and create lesson plans that are focused on these primary and secondary resources. And they're free. You just sign up and then you can do them. And it's been really, really, really positive experience in our classrooms, especially at the eighth grade level. And it's also a way that we can help support ELA classes as well. So we can do that, some of that close reading and use some of those same strategies. And so we found that it's been very successful for us and are going to continue to look at activities that continue to try to help ELA out for the reading level of our kids. So give you an example, so this is a picture from our classroom. I didn't do the artwork because I'm not that neat. I had a kid do it for me. But the, this is just an example of what we do in class. So we might look at a primary or secondary document, go through and annotate it so that we can help our kids. Our kids can learn to help themselves and build those skills so they can become better readers, better close readers. And so a lot of our conversations in our PLC time are looking at how we incorporate these strategies to help our kids, not just so their reading level goes up, but also when they get to high school, they're going to be asked to write at a different level than they're writing right now. And if you don't prepare the kids to do that, they're going to struggle when they get there. We'd rather have them learn it now so that they can use it later. And then one of the other highlights that we have is just the incorporation of student choice. Again, this is a theme of ELA. You hear a lot about choice in reading and choice in writing and for ELA. And so we try to incorporate that a little bit. Up here, you've got some examples of some projects the kids have done in our class. These are all different. This is not one big project. It's a couple of different ones. But again, the students choose something that spoke to them over the course of the trimester and they expand their learning somehow and they'll present. Maybe they'll create a piece of artwork, maybe they'll do a speech, maybe they'll write a paper. And so again, incorporating that choice, but also allowing them to show what they've learned through something that they can be successful at.
So thinking about next steps of the department, as we talked about, over the summer and into next school year, they'll dig into those standards and that might cause a change in some of the content, but will likely just be a deepening of the current skills and content that they are working on. And so as you know, some of that work has already started at the elementary and the high school level. And so we will work to kind of fit the middle school into that as well. So that are their, those are their next steps. Do you have any questions for us?
I just have kind of a question. So we have Wisconsin state standards. Does every state have their own as well?
I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure where the other states lie when it comes to content area standards. I know that lots of states had followed along with the National C3 framework. That is more of an approach to teaching social studies though. It doesn't really dictate what content is taught at what levels. And so I'm sorry that I don't know exactly what other states do. But I do know that at least in the state of Wisconsin, it is, they have a cycle of when they adopt standards. And so social studies is just newly revised and adopted. And so, do you have any?
No, really, I mean, so much of the push now is for skills-based versus content. So we might have different, different specific things that we're talking about in the state. But really, like, the focus is on like, can our kids read well? Can they write well? Can they write an argument? Can they find evidence? Can they, you know, provide reasoning, those sorts of things? And so there's not really a lot of uniformity in the topics that we teach. That's more kind of not really the focus.
Any other questions? Thank you so very much.
And while I was here, I just am not sure that the board knows. Jeremiah Vangen joined us this year. He's also our new head football coach. And so I just was not sure if the board had ever connected those dots. So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for that great work that you do as well.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, and I'll go a step further. Being brand new to our district and stepping up to that leadership role as a PLC leader at the middle school is fantastic as a word. Glad to have you on board for many years.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Good to see you. Okay, and Mr. Wyman is next for Capitol Projects.
All right. So Jill and I had, I would say, kind of some hard decisions to make because of what we're looking at in the referendum. Hopefully to come up here in 2020 or this following fall, I guess, November. So along with just our regular stuff as far as replacing carpets and replacing ceiling tiles and stuff like that, I wanted to point out some of the bigger ticket items. Forest Street kind of got a lot of our love last year. We spent a lot of time over there painting and just redoing a lot of stuff. So they only have a couple of big ticket items this year. One of them is to seal and repair the teacher parking lot. I suppose that would be on the south side of the building, I would say. That's looking at, we guess at about, well, five. The other big project at Forest Street this year would be an upgrade to their PA system. They have some dead spots. I think there's, is it, no, it's not listed here. There's about five or six spots that were dead. I think the cook, the cooks couldn't hear, there was a spot in the gym that was there. We want to add an outside speaker. So they didn't get quite as much love as they did last year. But Red Creek, obviously newer building, doesn't have a lot of needs yet. But one of the big things we wanted to do at Red Creek, if you guys have been in the front parking lot there, there's a strip of grass in between the parking lot and the driveway. And we would like to turn that into concrete. Not only would it be like a sidewalk, but it would maybe eliminate some of that problem where the water kind of settles in there after we plow. So it would just make for a lot cleaner. We can't even grow the grass there, to be honest, because we put so much salt and it just spreads to that, you know, it's about six feet wide and 200 feet long.
It's supposed to be aesthetically pleasing, but it really is a challenge to maintain anything that looks pleasing at all.
The other thing we looked at at Red Creek was pouring a surface under the swings. Right now, I think it's J.R. Jesse Construction poured the concrete slab around it. But we're looking at about 25,000 to put the same kind of padded, the same thing that's in the playgrounds at Forest Street and at Red Creek.
Right now, it's wood chips. And there's a sidewalk that goes down there. And swings are meant for handicapped accessibility, except pushing a wheelchair in, wood chips is not. We'd like to improve that area for all kids as well.
Yeah, because I think there's six swings and one or two of whom are handicapped accessible swings. But once you get the wheelchair to the wood chips, you kind of, yeah, that's about as far as you go. Get Heart, it's had a, I don't think there was any big ticket items at Get Heart this year. Just kind of typical maintenance. The middle school is where we hit some of the bigger items. Booster heater replacement, that was about 5,600. The parking lot at the middle school, the reason we chose the parking lot at the middle school is if we're thinking of the referendum from years to come, the big parking lot behind the high school would kind of be pushed out towards the current bus garage. So we would be redoing that at the time. We didn't think that'd be a wise choice right now. I know Tiger Lane could use some love, but that would probably be at the same time as the high school lot. So we put down resurfacing, like, a grind and relay at the middle school. We estimated that around $50,000. The big project inside would be to the LMC. If you guys have been up there, that was one of the places that did get painted last year. So it still has the lovely moab and burgundy paint. The carpet is seeing better days. And it has the face to the, all the cabinets and stuff in there still have that, I like the word moab.
I was just going to say same moab one more time.
It is same moab. So we looked at that, we kind of based that off of, we refaced the, at the high school LMC, we did that, of course. We got a price on that, carpet, paint, you know, maybe a lot of our paint and house with the college kids when they come back. And then about $17,000 for the furniture upgrade there. So I'm kind of excited to go talk to Debbie and get some more ideas on that.
Just so everyone understands, Debbie Gilperson is the LMC aide in the middle school. And she is just so welcoming to the kids. She invites them up there all the time. She's got a lot going on. So she was, that is one of the last LMCs that we've not touched with any of our furniture or any of our projects. And so she's got some great ideas for some maker space activities and so we're excited.
Yeah, the LMC's kind of changed a lot at the, at the middle school too. Instead of just being places to check up books, they have these working areas, hopped to maker spaces. So it's a lot more classes going in there and using it, not just getting it home. I think on this one, we switched, huh?
The racquetball courts.
Yes, I thought that was switched to this one. So the racquetball courts, we've discussed this, it's kind of been on my mind since the Lundis Center moved over to their current facility. The weight room that we have at the high school is antique, antiquated, is, I don't know how else to explain it. It is not in good shape. The weights that are in there, we have no climbing control in there. So a lot of stuff is really getting rusty over the years. We have a hard time fitting half a team into the weight room. I don't even think they could halpify ed class in the weight room right now. They put half the kids in the weight room and then they kind of have the other half in the hall working out kind of plyometrics. And so it's kind of hard even for the teacher to supervise because if you've been in the high school weight room, it's kind of an L shape. So if you're standing in the doorway, you don't know what's going on in the back if you're trying to pay attention to the kids in the hall. We've got a lot of, we looked at a lot of things for that weight room. We have a company notable Claire that has actually quoted us for weight room equipment. Flooring, talk about cutting a door in right where you would walk into the middle school, the pool entrance there. There's two double door sets. We would make that, the entrance into the weight room, if we could cut into it. And then maybe have either double glass doors or we've talked about a glass garage door so we could allow some of that natural light to shine into the weight room area. And we take the wall out in between the two racquetball courts. A lot of the stuff we would do in-house, might as well have a wall. There's some renderings here if you guys would like to look at that. But that's probably what we're most excited about, to be honest.
So how much of the $65,000 includes those ideas? Or is this supposed to just equipment and floor or?
That's the whole thing. So I think we have bid on all of the, all of the new weight room equipments. And everything came in at about 56. We guessed the flooring at about 4,500 and then the garage door. And pretty much taking the wall up, we can do in-house, laying the floor, we can do in-house. It comes in rolls and it's about a quarter inch thick and it goes over the wood floor because there's a wood floor in there now. We just want it so you drop a weight, it doesn't damage the wood floor. But we don't have to go high-end because we have kind of a cushioned wood floor in there. Yeah, we're thinking we're pretty close on our bid on that, around our guess estimate on that.
So just a couple of things on that topic. I'm sorry if you had a question.
I'm just thinking, we're talking about the middle school, right? But this would then close the high school weight room?
So that's where I was just headed, so perfect. So one of the positives of using those racquetball courts as a potential all-sport new weight room would be that coaches and outside at the school day access, you could very easily separate that access from the rest of the building. Right now, the high school weight room is embedded in the middle of the school. So anyone who has, any of our youth coaches who have access to the weight room also have access to the rest of the building. The other is Kent has referenced several times, a potential referendum. I just want to be very clear for it, seeking no action to move that forward yet. However, we know that the conversations are started. Part of that, one of our great challenges at the high school, the Family Consumer Sciences Room, she teaches so many different classes between her child and family and her foods and her clothing and her, and she needs storage room desperately. So her room, weight room ends here, her room is right here. So one of the ideas to get her some room. The current weight room, as you said, you can't get a whole fayed class in there. We would make that weight room even smaller and create a storage room for Mrs. Helverson's room. And then this would be some quality storage for the fayed people because they have like the yoga mats and the exercise balls and the plyometrics and all of that stuff. And there's not a place to store those right now. Same gym doesn't have a lot of storage to it. And fayed classes have really evolved to a lot more lifetime fitness emphasis as opposed to as many games as perhaps they used to do. So they spend quite a bit of time in the weight room. And right now, they divide, half go in there and half stay out. And so if they could all go over to that middle school, it would be the weight room. We would not do it in addition to what we currently have. It would be instead of what we currently have.
So based on this rendering, we're just wondering, where would the door be if you have a garage door, exterior door? Is it more accessible?
It would be this. So this was drawn beforehand.
Sure.
And that would go right as soon as you walk into the middle school in that pool entrance?
Yeah. So it would be immediately to your right?
Immediately to your right.
Okay.
And so then you could actually lock off the rest of the middle school if it was for another time. And they would walk in and go right into the weight room.
Right.
And you could kind of, there's, the two racquetball courts have their individual doors. We would probably eliminate one and leave one so they had access to the hallway if they wanted to use the cool restrooms, you know, to kind of keep everyone contained.
So if you had like this garage door type thing, would that be directly on the outside of the building?
No, that's on the inside. It would roll up, because the ceilings in that racquetball court are real high too. So it would just go straight up.
Okay, yep.
Kind of.
Gotcha. And then the double doors, like, so the racquetball things are here and then the pool is here. But there's doors that lap into the middle school right across from the pool doors, like that, in that hallway.
Yep.
So then all they would have access to is just like that.
Right.
Technically.
Yep.
Okay.
Now it's a collaborative conversation too, between fayed, middle school, high school and coaches. Jay, really new ones for coaches as well. What happened to the room above the pool?
So that is wrestling room. So youth wrestling did amazing fundraising and that is a really neat wrestling training space. They were the ones, unfortunately, they were in the middle school commons for everybody. They had to roll out their masks and roll them back up. And so they now have a permanent space.
Yep, yep.
The other thing we were looking at that is the racquetball courts have always been air-conditioned. So that was always a big thing that they, the push for the old weight room was it's just miserable in there in the summer. The football team would come in or the basketball court. So on to the high school. One of the things we've kind of put off over the years, we had AF S Hall last year, Athletic Field Services. And they looked at our track and they were surprised at how long our track has actually held up. So that is definitely due to repair. And the guy that came out, the rep that came out from AF S, thought that we would get another 10 to 12 years if we relaid that track this next summer here. One of the other big ticket items, tennis courts. You guys have probably heard about that over the years. We're, I, I.
Nothing wrong with advocacy, Mitch, it's okay.
I had, I was, I was thinking, how old are those tennis courts? 10, 11, 12 years old? And I was thinking, are we, like, are we doing this too quick? And then I started researching and at about a 10-year point is when they have to get redone. And where we laid our tennis court, it's kind of over a wet area. So I know the water is moving underneath that tennis court and it shifts a lot. And when you have a really cold winter like last, not this winter, but the winter before, a lot of things shifted. So it's about time to do that, I believe.
We've had the net posts even push up out of the concrete there. And the cracks have gotten wider. We tried to fill them, fill them, they just keep getting wider, so.
Yeah, we've actually like tied two posts together with straps to try to pull them back into place. And they seem to settle down after the frost goes out, but it's time. And I think those are our big ticket items besides the every-year stuff with the replacing carpet in a couple of rooms every year and some superpowers.
Another allowance for the roof should, should we need it to. We wanted to at least reserve some funds for that.
Yeah, we set that aside.
If we chose not to, we can.
Cut and not do the roof, yeah.
Anybody have any questions for that?
Any questions? This is an action item to approve the capital maintenance project's plan. Is there a motion to approve?
I need to first, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weyman, and Jill, for your work on that. And now we'll hear information about the youth risk assessment survey that we've, we've requested.
So the youth risk behavior survey is something that used to be facilitated by the UW extension office in our community, and for years, Black River Falls has participated. It was probably within the last five to seven years that the other two schools in the county have started to participate. Just this year, it became something that the county, Health and Human Services facilitates, which is kind of a shift, and so all districts in the county are again participating, and so what you are seeing tonight is countywide data. One of the things that our two neighbors are very concerned about is because their districts are so small, that if their data was very publicly shared, just their district, they feel like it would be almost self-identifying, because they have such a small population at each of those grade levels, and so they asked respectfully if we would publicly talk about countywide data, as opposed to individual building data. We do have the reports for our local, but out of respect for them and recognizing, I think, I think one of the classes that was used as an example, there's a middle school class of ten kids, and so if you're saying five of the sixth graders, that is, doesn't feel respectful. So that is why we're using county data. On the center of Black River Falls, Melman. All right. So this is the middle school data. Sorry, I'm not going to frog without setup, because it might not show. Okay, so we'll stick with it. So this is a survey that was taken last spring, so about February or March last year, just so you can see what you're looking at, this one says feel safe at school, all students is the first one, sixty-eight percent, and then the green are the, it's female, then male, and then you're seeing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So those are the percentage of students that say I feel safe at school. When we were meeting with them, we were able to pull up our local survey information, and we were pleased to see that the Black River Falls Middle Schoolers that responded to our survey last year had a higher percentage than this. Certainly, we would level a hundred percent of our students to feel safe at school, so it's, it's not fantastic, but it is looking a little bit more positive than this. Feelings of school safety, whether they belong, or whether they do not belong, so eighty-two percent of the students said that they feel like they belong.
How was it, thirty-six and eighty-two?
I think they said, wait, I gotta think about this, she said it was, Stephanie, you were there, right? Help me. It was the percentage of students that said they feel safe at school, said they feel they belong, and then of the.
So before you can see where, so students who feel safe at school, do they also have that sense of belonging?
There you go, thank you.
And so that's why the percentages don't add to the grade, because the state really has a push on that social-emotional well-being as well, and so several of the questions they asked outright, and then they asked it along with a sense of belonging, because they're trying to get at what is affecting that sense of belonging, is it safety, is it relationships with adults, is it, you'll see that kind of reflected again, that same kind of pinkish and blueish, again, throughout the season.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anxiety, depression, and self-harm, again, the pink is all students, fifty-three percent. It says self-reported anxiety, students have experienced significant problems with anxiety in the past twelve months. So again, this is a sixth grader getting to say it was a significant problem with anxiety, this certainly doesn't mean a medical diagnoses or any outside help, but it is disturbing to see fifty-three percent of students felt they had a significant problem with anxiety, and then, not surprising, sixty-four percent of females and forty-three percent of males, that is certainly something, we have some males that talk to us about a feeling of anxiety, but it's definitely more predominant amongst girls. And you can see sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, very similar across each of those grade levels. The next is considering suicide, so students who seriously considered suicide by sense of school belonging, so now of those people who said they felt they're belonging at school, these are the people that say eleven percent of the kids who said they do belong have seriously considered suicide, and forty-six percent of the kids who said they do not belong have seriously considered suicide. Alcohol use, so it says students who had at least one drink in the past thirty days is what the question is. So our middle school, fifteen percent of students were yes, you can see how sixth and eighth grade take graduated steps up. Late-night screen use, and honestly, this is one that the county really jumped on pretty significantly, because they talked heavily about the amount of social and emotional and academic problems you have when you have a lack of sleep. And so this question is, students who use technology between midnight and 5:00 AM on school nights. So midnight and 5:00 AM on school nights. So forty-nine percent of all students, females fifty-two, and then you can see sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So midnight and 5:00 AM, if I was in middle school, that wasn't a nighttime, and screens weren't a choice, and, and so they even talked about, this is one that they really talked about, could we do some county education? Talking to parents about taking the phone and putting it on the, they talked about like a phone parking spot that is somewhere in a neutral area of the house, or. I think the first part of trying to empower parents to parent and know that they're going to upset their child by doing this is one piece, I think the first piece is letting them know how dangerous this is, and how many negative health effects and academic effects there are to that lack of sleep, and we all know, when you're tired, you just don't function the same, and so if we have over fifty percent of our students saying that they're on their screens between five, or midnight and 5:00 AM, that's a pretty significant problem.
These are ages eleven to fourteen.
Yep, thirteen, fourteen, yep, yep. Currently vaping, so this was something that they talked a lot about, they think this is significantly under-reported. This was done last February, and while vaping has been around a couple of years, it's, boom, really happened within the last five to six months, it really has gotten so much more significant in that time, and I guess if you want to talk to somebody about good marketing, it would be the people who do this kind of work, but, so they think this is significantly under-reported, and unfortunately, I think the board could agree after the number of expulsions we've had, that we would agree that this is under-reported. So they said nine percent of complete, or total students, and you can see the difference between sixth, seventh, and eighth grade down on the end, but again, I think it's much higher, and the survey is retaken again in this spring, so I think we'll see a significant difference next fall. So this is feel like they belong at school, students who agree or strongly agree that they belong at school. So fifty-eight percent felt they belonged, females fifty-one, and males sixty-six, think about being a middle school kid and all the awkwardness that comes with that. I also think that middle school, they feel like they want to be high schoolers, but there's not enough activities and events for them to start self-selecting and to kind of choose their own path, whereas when you get to high school, there's so many different opportunities to get involved with things that interest you, with kids who also are interested by those things, and so you just feel a greater sense of belonging, because you're with other kids who are more like you, whereas middle school, that doesn't happen as easily, so. Teachers care, students who agree or strongly agree that the teachers care about them, so fifty-four percent of all students, male, sorry, female fifty-one, male fifty-seven percent, sixth grade was the highest rate, and then down seventh and eighth. I will tell you, in our local survey, we say there's an adult at school that I know cares about me, and we're, our local data is close to eighty percent, but it's asked a little bit differently than this is asked, and again, this is the countywide information, so. Mental health concerns, students who reported any mental health concerns by sense of belonging. So those that said they do have a sense of belonging, fifty-one percent of those students said that they had mental health concerns, and by those that said they do not belong, eighty-four percent of the kids who did not feel they belong said that they have mental health concerns for themselves. And now we're going to shift to high school. So very similar questions, that school connectedness, students who agree or strongly agree that they belong at school. You can see just overall, the percentages are higher than they were at middle school, still not nearly as high as we would like them to be, but moving in the right direction. Have a teacher or other adult at school to talk to by, oh, and then they broke it down by race or ethnicity. So American Indian, sixty-four percent were yes, Hispanic, sixty-eight, multiple races, seventy-nine, and white was seventy-seven percent. Students who most of the time or always feel safe at school. Significantly higher at the high school than it is at middle school, I would like to think that's more confidence perhaps than the, the middle school year. Students who used vaping products in the past thirty days. So we're up to the twenty-five percent. Again, unfortunately, we still think that's under-reported to comparison with. Oh, the late-night screen use, sorry. So here's the high school screen use, over fifty percent across the board between midnight and 5:00 AM. So what's next? We're going to flip one more. The, we did some conversation about what strengths we have as we came together as a county, the fact that we have the school liaison officer, the county position with that has really worked out well for other county agencies like Health and Human Services and the UW Extension Office, they appreciate that there's one go-to person that can quickly get information out to all the districts, and that we're all speaking the same language, as opposed to needing to continuously adjust. They are still aggressive with writing school grants, we have our AODA grant, our district has the mental health navigator grants, the other two districts do not have that. Then the truancy liaison position, so we have a school social worker who works on truancy, the other two districts contract a portion of a DHHS person to work on their truancy. Opportunities, there's efforts to strengthen collaboration with the truancy position, and then the initiation of community education campaign related to screen time or other ideas. So this group is going to come together again and talk about, let's work smarter, not harder, if this is a problem countywide, couldn't all three districts be speaking the same language and working to educate parents on what those challenges are? Next. Yeah, there's, I'm sorry, if we don't take it this year, it's every other year, so it will happen again in 2021. So maybe the vaping data will be exactly like it is now, because it's going to peak, and it's going to start on its way back down by then, which would be ideal, so. Any questions about that information?
So one of the things that would be, and I don't know if we do this or not, but I keep thinking about those kids that kind of fall off the ledge in middle school, is there any way that, or are we already doing things to make that grade school, middle school transition a little bit easier for those kids, is there any kind of mentoring from like youth graders to sixth graders?
I, I'm not aware, and Dave just stepped out, I'm not aware of an eighth grade to sixth grade. I do know that the counselors meet with the families to do fifth to sixth grade, we do do some of that conversation. We've actually started talking this year about some of the sixth grade teachers going over to look at what fifth grade life looks like. When we did our strategic planning session, one of them has followed, we invited anybody that wanted to come, it just so happened that of the eight families that were here, I think six of them had middle schoolers, and they all talked about what a stark contrast it was for them as families who go from elementary to middle school, and that they felt it was very respectfully, but they said, at the elementary, they take us parents and they wrap us up in a blanket with a hat and mittens and make sure we're all communicated with and soft and comfortable, then you get to the middle school, and it's like, it's every man for themselves. And so we have internally talked about what we can do better to help facilitate that transition, with communication with families, communication with the students, and just trying to not make it feel quite so drastic, and we feel the adults should be the ones adjusting, not necessarily the kids. And then that next step is definitely true from eighth grade to ninth grade, that we know we have kids that choose to not engage in their academics during the middle school, and yet we pass them on. We try, there's interventions, there's consequences, there's all that, but in the end, the research to support retention is absolutely none, and so then they fall into that habit, then they get to high school, and they feel like last year they don't get credits, and so unfortunately, it reinforces negative, reinforces poor behavior through middle school, that when they get to high school, they have to learn why they're going to leave if they don't have those credits, and so that's a conversation we've had with a lot of other districts, how do you stop that? How do you put some teeth into those, that disengagement at a younger age before it's kind of for all the marbles when it comes to graduation time, and that's really a challenge for a lot of people, so. Any other questions about that?
Very concerning, is it information for us to have, to absorb? Thank you. Okay, the next item is the school calendar for 2021.
All right, so hot off the presses, so we sent out, actually, it was a evening that something came up, and so Jill facilitated for me, we invite anybody in the district that wants to come together and talk about calendar, they come, I actually sent out the templates ahead of time and said, teacher contract is one hundred and ninety-one days, we have one hundred and seventy-eight student days, this many professional development days, make your magic, whatever you want it to look like, you do that, and so there were two options that were created by that committee that night, we sent them out for a district-wide vote. About every two, three years, we invite families to vote on that as well, along with a survey, asking them, how highly do you value a spring break? How important is it to you to be done the first week in June? When there's a professional development day, do you prefer it attached to a weekend as opposed to in the middle of the week? And so we try to engage families in that, but it doesn't change that drastically from one year to the next, and if we ask all the time, then they stop offering their opinions. So we don't ask every year, but it's interesting, and we had some conversation about this just before, there are some staff members who feel so strongly and passionately about wanting a week-long spring break, they just feel like it would make all the difference to have a solid, like Tuesday to Tuesday, or whatever, solid week of spring break, because the state won't let us start before September one, that pushes us way back in June, and so the people who hear a lot about spring break are the ones who come to the calendar committee, and so they make a recommendation for a spring break, and then we send it out for everyone to vote, and everyone else looks at it and says, June ninth, no way, take away the spring break after we get out earlier, and those people at the calendar committee say, but we all wanted it, you and that room all wanted it, not everybody else, so, anyway, that is an ongoing challenge. The option that won is the one that does not have a week-long spring break, and I sent out a, Jill had sent out the survey last week, and at like three o'clock, right, it was earlier, like noon today, I checked it, it was literally forty-nine point five percent and fifty point five percent, so I sent the survey out to all staff again, said, come on, help us break this tie. The final was option one, and it was fifty-two point one percent picked this one, so I feel like there's no clear path, right, wrong, indifferent, working the same days, so, anyway, this is the one that won, and so this is what we would recommend. It has the last day of school as Friday, June fourth, and if you recall, last year, the board decided that seniors were going to finish up the Sunday before that last week, and so according to this calendar, that means that graduation date would likely be, that's Memorial Day though, Memorial Day weekend, and we didn't want that.
Send that for both.
When did the other one finish?
Both calendars finished on June fourth, the only difference was they took the three snow days out, and how they were going to make up that time, so that it really, it's kind of interesting that they, more people chose the one with snow days in it.
Yeah.
Memorial Day is the twenty-two.
No, that's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
We're in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, yeah.
And so we're recommending this calendar to you, but we need to have a conversation about graduation, because on the survey last year, people were, wanted to stay on Sundays, the majority of people wanted the seniors to be done before the rest of the student body, but Memorial Day weekend was not super popular, there's obviously a lot of things happening in the community.
So this is the calendar that is recommended, but then we're going to be presented with an issue and a problem by approving this one as well.
The county committee did not set the graduation.
No, I know, I know, we've done that, but, yeah.
Yeah, I was just all of a sudden, for graduation, based on parent feedback, so knowing that every year, school has June, first week of June, it's going to fall into Memorial Days, sometimes it is, so, yeah.
Like this current year, it doesn't, that is, there's another.
The first was a Monday.
Correct, the first was a Monday, so this current year, graduation is the Sunday before, and it is not Memorial Day. So what I would recommend, if you are concerned about that, we can adopt the calendar, so that we can get moving on that, and I will pull up the parent feedback survey on graduation date, and we can look again at their prioritization. We did last year, eighth grade through juniors, so we have all of our current high school parents that had the opportunity to respond last year, so I can share that with you. There's not any burning need to have graduation date twenty-one set at this time.
Okay.
Would you prefer that?
Would it be fair to ask that, that class, if they were going?
I guess I would ask you guys, if you want it to pop all over the place every year to year, letting that group decide, or whether you would prefer to set an expectation?
I would really ask that question on a year that Memorial Weekend's. I would only ask that question on a year that Memorial Weekend ended up like this.
We certainly can. As I said, I, Jill and I haven't connected that closely on this, so I apologize. We did that survey of our region. There's a lot of schools who hold graduation on Memorial Day weekend. However, we also know that there's a large pile that happens on Memorial Day weekend as well. So, that may be tougher in our community than others.
What happened that way for?
It was. In the past, it was too, right? Because it used to always be Memorial Day. So, again, I'm not saying it's, if you want to talk about the next thing, I can pull up that survey. I'm sure.
I know enough certain things that's going on from the weekends too with state cameras.
So, making one group happy will not.
Well, I would be happy to make a motion to adjourn with this and then I can discuss it. I mean, this is 2021. So, I mean, that conversation can happen, but you're kind of in a calendar in order to move forward.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the presented 2020 to 2021 school calendar. Thank you. Thank you. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Okay, and we will be looking at that in the future.
Graduation date, parent feedback for you.
Okay, you, you said at a later time. Oh, okay. Perfect, perfect. Okay, we'll move on to state funding and voucher system. Oh, no.
Someone made a comment about the sirens when they said they don't have sirens in town. Sorry, criticize this. So, there has been an interest in having a conversation about the school board making a statement expressing their support for public education and a statement of, that could perhaps be used to lobby our elected officials, or that would at least let everybody know where the school district of Black River Falls and the school board stands. And so, we've had this conversation a couple of times before and I know that some of you have some strong opinions. I just wanted to share a few things that I find extremely concerning when it comes to the voucher schools and what it is doing to the rest of public education in our community. Not our community alone, but in the state of Wisconsin. You clearly hear about voucher schools and parental choice programs on a national scale as well as on the state scale. I will tell you that the push to not raise property taxes, to not increase drastically change how we fund schools, and the movement to increase the participation in voucher schools is deeply concerning to, to school administrators everywhere and should be deeply concerning to an awful lot more people. The direction we are headed, that same pool of tax dollars is going to be asked to support two parallel systems. I think we could all look back in history and talk about separation and whether you really can do equal justice to two separate systems. And the fact of the matter is, it is public tax dollars being used and increasingly, increasingly growing rates to support religious education in our state. And so, just to add some numbers to this, this current school year, $349.6 million in taxes were collected and spent on voucher schools. The vast majority of those voucher schools are religious. There are some exceptions, but the majority of them are religious. And I actually have the list of all of the voucher schools and the amount of money that they receive, the public tax dollars that each one of those schools received. Where it gets concerning is that we can look at the school district of Black River Falls and say, we don't have a lot of private schools really close by. That is going to be a strong competition for us. And so, this isn't really a fight that we should get involved in. I strongly disagree with that because the Milwaukee Parental Choice Program, remember, $174,308 right on our state aid document that we receive. 174,308 is taken off for the, thank you Jill, just highlight the Milwaukee Charter Parental Choice Program. That one is funded right off the top of everybody else's dollars. The Racine Program continues to grow and grow and grow. We don't have any kids from here going to those parental choice schools in Milwaukee. However, the concept of constantly expanding people's opportunities leads to things like this. We get a total of $10 million, $10,783,815 in aid and almost $200,000 of that were taken away for kids that have never walked through our door. The law.
Wouldn't they go to the Milwaukee School District anyway? Because those kids are going to be.
Come from us. Have they come from Milwaukee public? 174 is coming right from us because this is different than open enrollment. So, you're thinking of open enrollment where I live in this district, I'm a resident here, but I'm going to choose to go to another district. Milwaukee is all one great big district. This is the school that I'm supposed to go to, but there's a private religious school that, and they started with Milwaukee because there were so many family schools in Milwaukee that was there to attempt at turning things around in Milwaukee. So, it's not open enrollment, it's choosing to go to the private school. And that really is the difference. Because, like if we have a student that lives in Blair Taylor and chooses to come here, Blair Taylor gets state aid on that student and then they end up having to ship us almost all of that state aid, not all of it. They still get a little something because it is their resident, but then most of their aid comes to us. The Milwaukee program, they take it off. So, there's all the funding for all schools and then they take from every one of those for that Milwaukee Parental Choice Program before anyone else sees that aid. There are people who live in Milwaukee public schools who open enroll out to one of the neighbors and then it would be that same process that you're talking about.
Because I guess, okay, so on the flip side, argumentative side of me, if I'm a parent in Milwaukee School District and I know that the public schools are failing, I am not going to send my child there. I'm going to send them somewhere else. You know what I'm saying?
I do. It shouldn't affect the pay for private.
But the public schools then should rise to the challenge and get better. That's, you know what I'm saying? I'm talking Milwaukee.
I understand.
Why are they allowed to continue to fail? That's my argument. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
We wouldn't have this need for this.
I understand.
That, that's just, I mean, like talking about Milwaukee, I mean, we've heard about that for generations. Like, why is that allowed to continue?
And so, my concern is, it is spreading well beyond Milwaukee. We have one student, and here's the other challenging part. We know that we have one student who, a high school student who went to a private school and so that state aid was taken to us and given, taken from us and given to that. We don't know who that student is. In open enrollment, they have to apply with us. We know who that family is. We can at least have a conversation with that family. Is there anything else we can do? You know, how could we better meet your needs? But a voucher program, we don't know who they are. And, and they just, our money just goes to that school with no identification of who they are. And so, that's different. That is, how do we know that that's making us fail or saying that we're failing? The challenge with the vouchers is that it is different than open enrollment because the private schools do not have to provide all the services we do. They are, there's no school report card published on those private schools. There is no mandated special education programming on those private schools. And yet, they're using public tax dollars. And that is my fundamental challenge with this. We are held to a lot of scrutiny because of the federal programs that we participate in. And the voucher schools are just dollars that get swept off and there is no accountability.
So, they can just operate at their own.
No, that's not true. They are audited and they do require, they have certain requirements. If you look at the state statutes, that they have to meet and they have to be financially stable and accountable for where those dollars are going.
Have you seen their scorecards?
I'm not talking about scores. I'm talking about other things.
Our fundamental purpose is to educate kids though. And so, we're judged on how we educate kids.
And a number of these schools are special needs schools. There are four kids with special needs that then don't go into the public schools.
That's the minority. That truly is the minority. And you're welcome to look at the list.
And the majority of the schools don't accept the special needs situations.
My question is, so, so they do not.
So, their scores would be high.
Submit to all of the, like, so they're not, I mean, I've looked at the list.
Their kids don't take the Wisconsin Forward Test. Their kids don't have to take the ECT. They, their teachers don't have to be certified.
They do not have a school report card.
There is a lot of push too for the transparency of how much this is costing our district in our county, just to be transparent on our taxes, which people just can't see that openly. You have to search and search and search to see where this money is going.
I actually, my office has to review non-traditional schools for our, our youth who are submitting a diploma from a non-public school. And comparing and researching a private school, you're right, there's no, there's no standard like public schools have to adhere to. So, it's very whatever, whatever the parent are willing to pay for.
And public tax dollars are being used for that and are being taken away from public education.
So, it's very minimal.
They might be fabulous. They absolutely might, but it's because of the choices that they've made and the funding that they've acquired. To take it one step further, the other challenge that I have with the vouchers is that first round of vouchers, they were primarily, those slots were filled with kids that were already attending those schools. It was students whose parents were already choosing to pay that tuition and then they increased the number of voucher spots that were available. And guess what? Those kids that were already attending were the first grantees into that program. Further, there are kids now that you can't use a voucher into a private school if you're homeschooling. So, there have been cases that have been found in Wisconsin where a child will register with their public school, will attend like the first day, first two days, they're on the roster there, and then they decide to go take a voucher because now they're a state student and has money attached to them and they were homeschooled before.
And the vouchers are not available to just anybody.
You have to apply. You're absolutely right.
And you have to have income guidelines.
They're, no, I don't believe they're as driven by income.
32,000 for a family of two. And there are income guidelines because the program was designed to support children who were in poverty areas that did not have opportunity in those schools. So, there are income guidelines for those vouchers.
So, they would normally have to pay, like, okay, so previously then, that was, those were programs that if you wanted your child to go there, you paid tuition.
Like if you wanted your child to go to.
So, now this opens it up to, so are those, those children are still paying that can afford to pay to go there?
Yes.
But this is helping a different student who couldn't afford to go there?
I can tell you because I love.
Or just some, they still have to pay some tuition.
So, for a single parent home, they have to have an income of 36, no, it's not even that. It's 32, somewhere in the $30,000 or less. And for a married couple with a child, it has to be less than $52,000. Okay, if they're in less than that, they can apply for the voucher. It's income-based. And so, anyone else going to the school has to pay regular full tuition. So, that was why the program was designed particularly in Milwaukee and then they expanded it to the rest of the state.
And so, the challenge is, at the same time that is expanding, so are the allowances for open enrollment. And so, parents truly, if they feel like their local school district is failing, they have the option to open enroll to another public school district, which would still keep public tax dollars in public education.
And that's the key, Sean. Everyone pays those taxes.
Agreed.
Shouldn't parents have a choice then?
Separation of church and state, I really believe strongly. To pay, use my tax dollars for religious education, I really have a problem with.
No, go ahead. Let's, let's, let's give, Patty wasn't quite finished with her statement and then, and then Will. Okay, I'm sorry.
So, there are a lot of things in the public schools that parents don't want their children to be exposed to as well.
Absolutely. And they can sometimes isolate those things and ask for their child not to participate? That is a choice.
Laurel?
Okay, so are all charters religious?
No.
No.
All charters are different.
Yeah, that's different.
And then my only last question, because I just feel like I need to understand this. Is that the only dollar amount that's taken out of the whole state's tax aid, that 174?
The Black River Falls.
That's our portion.
So, again, the total in the state was $349.6 million.
Okay, that went, okay, that makes more sense to me.
Maybe it would help if you looked at this list of schools to clarify what the requirement was.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, because that is kind of minimal.
Central Black River Falls.
Okay.
So, what they did then was average that $36 million, you're averaging over all of the districts and saying that each district, because of this big pool of money, that's the chunk that there, that's their percent.
Yes and no. That is just for Milwaukee. This 349 is for all of the voucher schools. And so, that is not evenly distributed. That is based off of, we had one student go, that money went for that one student. So, this one, everyone pays for because it's Milwaukee and that's what we're, we do. The rest of this is not evenly divided. And I will tell you, our neighbors in Melrose Mandoro, they are a lot smaller than us. They have, they live closer to La Crosse. And so, they lose, you know, eight kids to Aquinas in a year. That's a significant budget impact. Bearaboo, who started this conversation, they have over 50 students that choose to go to the private school. So, just one more set of numbers. We receive, our revenue limit per student is $9,700, period. $9,700. If you are a choice elementary kid, so on that list, elementary, it's $8,046. If you're a high school, it's $8,692. If you're special education, it's $12,000. So, a special education student is reimbursed at a higher rate at a voucher school than they are in our system.
Scott, you were, you had something to say? Well, you were talking. I didn't, I didn't hear what you said. I didn't hear what you said. Okay, okay. Any other comments?
As being on the Black River Falls Board, I, I really feel that we're advocates for public education. And I, I think we need to support the growth of public education, not decreasing of our funding. And that's just my, my feeling of that. We've all taken that oath to be advocates for public education and to grow public education.
We are also representatives of the communities in which we live in and we are elected by them.
I, I understand that too. We have one community member who wishes to speak and I'd like to invite Carol Hornby to come forward to address the board.
It would work best to, for it to be recorded on the. Oh, okay. Is this, all right. First of all, I want to thank you for inviting me to the meeting tonight and also for Dr. Severson for inviting me to speak. When I first sent the article to Dr. Severson about the Bearaboo School Board developing a list of resolutions about private school vouchers as it related to public school funding, I, I did not have this in mind at all. The, the article just piqued my interest and so I just asked her if our board had developed any kind of resolutions regarding this topic. I find it easy to sit back and not ask questions anymore. It's just a lot less stressful to let someone else speak for me or to ask the questions that need to be asked and, or to ask the questions and then not even bother to seek an answer. But in 2020, I decided that I needed to get more involved, take more active role in societal issues that I had kind of sat on my laurels long enough. And as I have grandchildren going through various school systems throughout two states, I guess I see a lot more of the needs and the challenges that are faced by schools today. So, anyway, that's why I'm here tonight. There are several thoughts that I just can't get out of my mind. And it's with continued tax cuts to education and continued flow of tax dollars to vouchers, our public schools are really struggling. Struggling to find and then retain quality teachers in the face of ever-increasing class sizes, regulations and requirements, greater and greater needs for, with students socially and educationally, increasing behavioral issues, problems with drugs and vaping and social media. And you've, you've touched on all of those areas already tonight. All of which somehow the teachers seem to be the ones that are expected to solve all those problems. And yet, this ends up just making education or teaching kids so totally overwhelming that we have more and more teachers leaving the field. They just burn out. They can't, they can't deal with it anymore. And I, I just visited with a, a young girl on Sunday and I asked her, well, how was her school? You're going, she'd been in a small Wisconsin school and she's now teaching in an inner-city school in Minneapolis. And she said, it was going well. And she said, since Christmas, there had been changes. And she says, I've spent a lot of time crying and I don't know how much longer I can do this. And, and she's so talented. Well, anyway, back to this. We all know that we get out of something, whatever we invest in it. So, if we don't invest enough, we don't get much. Our society cannot support two quality school systems. Simple as that. It's just not possible. There's not enough dollars. We are guaranteed a. We are guaranteed a free public education and that is where the full investment has to be for our tax dollars. By School Board Policy 153, and I believe I'm interpreting this correctly, the Board is required to fight for laws that protect and fund the free public education and that you are required to fight for repeal or modification of any law that impedes that responsibility. It is not an option. If as a board member, you do not feel that you can do that, then you need to leave the board and make room for members who can do that. So to that thought, I urge this board to make and pass resolutions that will fully fund excellent public education for all students in our community and state. That tax dollars no longer be funneled to private schools and demand that the state legislature fulfills its responsibility to provide the funding that enables local communities to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Are there any more comments or questions?
Is that law on the song?
Okay, I think so. Ni-Homa?
I just did a quick search. So the family poverty, or the, the family requirement is twenty, two hundred twenty percent of the federal poverty level. So it actually raised in the last few years. So a family of three, the limit is four thousand, forty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-four. With an additional family member, the limit raised is nine thousand one hundred ninety-six. And the likely received is three hundred percent of that. Yeah.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, that our board make a resolution to support the non-growth of the vouchers in our state. And I guess we could state it a little differently, but just, and we would have time to, to craft that resolution to, as a group then. But I'd like to make a motion to move forward with a resolution along that line.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we're going to do a roll call vote because I understand we're not going to probably be at a, a full. We, we would meet as a board to, to make a resolution to support the non-growth of vouchers within our state. And we would be representing the school district of Black River Falls to do that. So we have a motion and a second and we'll take a roll call vote, a yes or no to go forward. Scott Burton. Amy Hoffman. Laurel Meek.
No.
Ni-Homa?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
And I'm, I'm going to put down as a yes. So the no's have it, so we will not move forward at this time. Thank you for the discussion and the vote. Thank you for your time. If I could just share my first year teaching, that reading there was just reminiscent of my first year when I was on the Public Relations Committee and I met you for the first time, Carol. And you were helping me craft my messages to share, so thank you. Okay. And now we move on to employment recommendations. And I, before we start on that, I would like to recognize that, did Dave leave? Oh, he did. Oh. We were going to recognize Dave Rue last time and he wasn't here as Dave's retirement, but. Try next month. I guess, yes, okay.
He was here a big time ago.
Yeah. Did, did he have to leave for some reason?
He just asked me to cover for Dave.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. Well, if, okay. Okay, we'll move on to whatever. Okay, thank you. So there are several positions that need your approval. We have two at the middle school who have announced their retirement for the end of the year and two teachers that are leaving now mid-year. And actually, Amy Emerson, Special Education Aid, resigned today. So a motion to approve the employment recommendations. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay. Okay, we've done extracurricular. Let's move on to monthly expenditures. You receive those in your packet. Any questions or anything you want brought out for explanation? Is there a motion to approve the expenditures? Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Facility update.
So I want to update the board on the process and I agree with most of the questions. We have identified several areas that are, we are looking at for some possible remodeling and some work. You saw the large list of long-term capital maintenance projects that we are working on. In addition to that, for academic spaces at the high school, we were talking about the music art, the consumer sciences area, the business ed area, as well as Julie Tiedens and all of her recording and all of that. Retrofitted smaller classroom. They do a lot of editing, filming, studio, all of that stuff. And so she would love some additional space to spread her wings there a little bit. So we, and the first time we had a conversation here about facilities, we had talked about moving our early childhood in our 4K to the Gebhardt site. Since that time, we had all of our behavior conversations and we have filled Gebhardt with other programs. And so we are no longer recommending that we move our youngest kids there, but instead would look to Forest Street School and see what remodeling we can do to that building so that we could stop renting space for that other 4K program and we could get our therapy sessions out of the shower stalls and add some additional storage to that building. So the remodel option for Forest Street has increased pretty significantly. And so where we're at right now, as they were here last week and they went through and looked at all the systems again, talked through, we met with each of the teachers in those areas and talked with them, then met with Melanie about Forest Street. They're coming back this Thursday to talk to us, but a little bit more finalized so that we can start to get some rough dollars together. We've scheduled two community-wide meetings. They're scheduled for March 10th and March 30th. The first one will be hosted at the middle, or at the high school, pardon me. And we will end both of those meetings with an offer of a facility tour. I very much want to get people down in that basement so that they can see exactly what it looks like. And then.
And then waiver to the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll make sure the team is just leaving. And then on March 30th, we'd be at Forest Street and then again, we would end with a, a school tour after that. I want to explain that the process is going to be significantly different because there's not so many different options to try to sort through. They are suggesting that we don't create a facility task force, that we post two informational meetings and we advertise the heck out of this, and so we will certainly do that. This is a, going to be a postcard. This is just a template we got today. It'll go out in the shopper to everyone. It'll be on our social media. I'll do a school messenger to families. We'll paper and add in the paper. We, I'll do it on my radio spot, all of that kind of stuff. So we'll advertise it like crazy. The hope is that on March 10th, they come together, we talk to them about the big picture project, we take the tour of the high school and we can talk to them about early, early costing ideas. Then the March 30th meeting, we hope people come to both of them. We will be able to have incorporated any feedback that people gave us on March 10th. And by the 30th, our costs would be a little bit closer to nail down. And then we would have Brian Brewer attend from Baird Financial that would be able to explain the whole financing possibilities for people. So that by March 30th, they could know for X amount of dollars, here's an approximation of how much work we would get done in the district and here's approximately what the tax impact of that would be. Then following that, maybe on the 30th, again, if we need to make adjustments based off of feedback that we get. In early April, we would be working on our community-wide survey with school perception, similar to what we did last time. And then end of April, early May, that community-wide survey would go out to everybody. That is the, in my opinion, that is the holy grail of referendum judging because his success rate, if you ask people and you follow the advice that they tell you, his success rate in passing is incredible. And so if we do that survey and find out there's not community support moving forward, cease and desist. It is not worth going through the efforts then. And so if we find out there is community support, fantastic. That you would then know by the, either our May or June board meeting and would ask in July for the board to take action if moving forward or decide this isn't the time and we regroup and do it another time. So does everyone understand the timeline and the process that we're talking about? So I was going to start with a personal invitation to all the people who served on the Facility Task Force last time. It was very important to us as we met with them to make sure we talk about this as the next steps in our facility conversation, not, here we are, asking for more. You built this beautiful school and we're still not satisfied. We want to make sure that we remind people, we had a list this big and you prioritized and then you told us how much you would support, but the rest of the stuff didn't go away in the meantime. And so trying very hard to make sure we talk about it as our continued conversation as opposed to starting over. I am wondering what the board would like to do, being that there's only going to be two meetings. Do you want me to post them as potential board meetings and the whole board would be available to come to them? Or does the board want representation there and then could come back and share with the board? What role are you wanting to play in that?
I know that I can attend the second one, but I won't be able to.
Would it be cleaner to just post them both as potential and then if you could make it great, would that be cleaner?
We won't be taking any board action, but we, it would be a chance to observe and listen to what the feedback is.
So we don't need to worry about forum attending? That's not.
I just want to be sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Any other questions about that process moving forward?
Okay, thank you. Budget center allocations. The buildings.
So the admin team is going to be meeting and talking about different pieces of the budget. This is one that we usually set in February. Not really a big change. We again have the same per pupil allocation, but remember, we took some things away from the budget centers that they no longer have to fund. The Skyward licenses are coming out of another budget center, which is significant for them. We've been doing a lot of furniture replacement outside of their budget centers. They used to have to buy student desks and chairs and things as well, but we've been trying to help out with that process outside of their budget center. And then some curricular materials as well, if they're not having the dollars anymore. So we felt like we could keep that per pupil allocation the same and we could use those dollars differently afterwards, so. Not a big change in the overall budget. It's only an increase of five hundred and seventy-five dollars as compared to this year. It's just a change of where the kids are and you can see the change. High schools going down by, their allocations go down by three hundred fifty-six dollars. Middle school five hundred dollars. Forest Street gets a thousand dollars more and right wing is exactly the same.
I have to ask this question again. That hasn't changed for a long, long time. And, and a lot of times we hear that teachers are having to buy supplies because the students aren't, there's not money for supplies. Is that something that we should think about changing?
Well, we just made the change from this year where we took the Skyward, those three things that I listed, those are not in the budget anymore for the buildings to have to purchase and have to pay for. So hopefully we're seeing that trend change.
And a Skyward license was like over ten thousand dollars for a building, so.
Several thousand, yeah, several thousand. Not quite ten, but almost.
So, so tell me why that doesn't matter there then?
So fewer things are coming out of these dollars. So you ask, you do ask this question every year, which is just fine.
I just want to be sure.
We recognized it too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so we, they're not having to buy as many things out of this as they used to. So now we, out of the district funds, pay for the Skyward license. Stephanie pays for more of the consumable workbooks out of her CNI budget. So there are fewer, we're, instead of changing this, we are taking some funds that used to have to come out of the building and now buying them with other district-wide funds. So it's like this has been inflated, but that is a different way to get at it positively impacting all buildings. As opposed to just saying, this building wants this much more, this building wants this much more. We can say, district funds will pay all the Skyward licenses. You don't have to anymore.
So there's more flexibility in what that money's being used for.
And I agree that it is a, a statement that you hear on the news a lot, that teachers are having to buy supplies. I know a couple of the principals have started rounding and one of the questions they ask is, do you have the resources you need to do your work? And they're hearing, yes, that they are. We have an incredibly generous community. If you talk to Vicky Mikulski, the amount of school supplies that are donated and this time of year, I mean, they just come back and we get more and more. So if somebody is doing that, they are probably doing a specialty project and they didn't ask for the supplies and they just choose to do it themselves.
Just want to make sure they have enough to do their job.
Yeah.
I appreciate that and we did hear that. I also compared, CISA does a survey of multiple different things. One of them was how much do they bill their budget on for their buildings per pupil amount? And so we had a little comparison going of different, actually it's across the state. And we were looking pretty, actually in that comparison, we thought, I was going to say, if their per student allotments to the buildings are a lot less. So I was feeling pretty good about that too when I was doing that comparison.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion to approve the budget center allocations as presented? Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Next, we have policy committee, some first readings of some policies that were gone over at the meeting and moved forward to the board. And we'll just go through them quickly here to anyone has any questions.
So the full-time open moment, adjustments are being made because the state law continues to change. And so just making sure that our language is up to date with current law, so. Any questions? The suspension and expulsion of students. We just added the reference to a DEP or behavioral DEP. We also, it was practiced most of the time, but we made it a matter of policy that if a student is suspended, that there will be a reintegration meeting between the family and the student. We have checked with Leo Council, it is not lawful to extend this suspension until a parent comes in, which is unfortunate. We were hoping to do that, but at least we can mandate that a meeting does happen eventually. Any questions about that? The drug-free workplace, that policy was just old. It was from 1990 and the whole drug world has changed an awful lot since then. And so I updated it using the WSB Policy Resource Guide and it is far more thorough in not just while you're on duty, but when you're off duty, when you are on any kind of school property or school event or any of those things. There is still a separate policy for drivers because there are separate rules attached to if you have a CDL license. And so I did not integrate that into this one. I kept that one separate because I had other friends involved in that as well. Our previous policy was pretty slim and to the point, which I usually appreciate conciseness, but the world of that has changed an awful lot. Questions? The next one is administering medication to students. Also, a policy that gets some scrutiny sometimes. We try very hard to balance the family's need to get their prescription medication back and forth to school efficiently with the safety of all other students, when elementary students are carrying like an inhaler around or whatever that is. And so we've updated the medication policy and the rule that goes along with it. We added when they go on field trips, all of that stuff. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but currently Wisconsin law, anybody who is designated to administer medication at school has to take an online safety module that, and they have to pass and submit. So what used to be the secretary giving them an aspirin and a mint has turned into a whole documentation train and all of that. So our nurse does a great job with coordinating between the clinics and the doctors and the secretaries, but there's an awful, awful lot of medication procedures that happen in those school offices on a daily basis.
Is there any penalty for people like taking morphine or ibuprofen or stuff?
So a parent is supposed to fill out a non-prescription medication form. We actually, instead of asking them to bring it from five, we pause by their program and say, the parent says you can take ours, but we don't want you carrying one in your backpack or something. Yep. Okay. The next one is a brand-new policy, so it, oh, that's the rule. Yeah, that's good. This one is a brand-new policy. It sounds odd when you talk about recording of district meetings. However, with so many devices having recording capabilities like never before, we have found ourselves as the adults sometimes in a meeting where somebody is recording under the table or is. We actually had a, we found two students who were sent to school with what's called a nanny cam, that they are recording all the interactions. And so if you consider that for a moment, anytime there's a recording of another student, that's a behavioral record of that student and now the other family has that record and the school doesn't. And so while I can understand a parent who wants to. And so while I can understand a parent who wants to monitor, it is not lawful for them to come and record at school. And so we have taken those devices off and called the family and said, not okay. And sometimes they say, my child's being bullied and I'm sick of it, you're not helping, so we're going to record it. And we say, still can't happen. So it's becoming a thing, which is disappointing. Yeah. So the recording of district meetings, really this is just saying that if there's a request due to a disability, somebody could, could make that request. There are times when we have an IP meeting that it's in a timeframe that it absolutely needs to happen and the, one parent is ill or can't be there or something, they can make a request to record a meeting. In Wisconsin, it is a single-side consent law. So that means if Laurel and I are having a meeting and I say, Laurel, can I record this meeting? And she says, no. And I say, I can. I don't have the right to record it because it's a single consent state, but I cannot just, I can't record it without her knowledge. So anytime somebody tries to use a recording, you, they have to have evidence of them saying, I'm going to record this meeting so that there is consent. So anyway, there's now a whole process in place for families who want to request to record their parent-teacher conference or their disciplinary meeting or any of those things. And unfortunately it happens, so we got that. The next one is electronic surveillance of public areas of school buildings and grounds. I don't know why this isn't edited one. I'm not sure if I got some, I'm sorry. I wonder if I just, I don't seem to see the track changes, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll double-check on that and have that available in, into our information. So those are the, the changes that are being recommended to be approved at our next meeting. Review those and send in any concerns or changes, questions, and then we'll approve of those next, next time. Any questions on them? Okay. Here we have meeting minutes that were in your packet. Is there a motion to approve those or any of those you want brought out? Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Okay, motion carried. Dr. Severson's report.
I'm going to bring it right over to the building. I know the elementary are ready with their AGR, their achievement guarantee. So they have a work right here.
I think it's, yeah, it's already on. You can go to the next slide. This is our AGR report. So our goal at Forest Street for both math and for literacy is that at least 55% of our students will meet 100% of their typical growth goal and/or meet the criteria for overall placement score to be on grade level. Now, in English, what that means is that there's two goals that are set from our I-ready assessment. One is their typical growth goal and then there's a stretch growth goal. And so we are really looking at how much on average we can typically expect the students to meet. And so we want a little over half of our, our kiddos, as a starting point, to meet 100% of their growth goal, their typical growth goal. And then from this assessment, it also places them either, in our building, it's either emerging K or mid-year K kindergarten, end-of-the-year kindergarten, emerging first grade, mid-year first grade, late first grade or above. And so we want them to, based on what grade level they're in, to end on end-of-the-year placement. And so AGR asks us to identify some strategies to use. Two strategies that we are using are instructional coaching. We believe that that will raise teacher efficacy and ensure proper data-driven instruction. And in kindergarten, our class numbers are below 18 and so we are also using that as an indicator for an intervention.
Do you all remember what AGR stands? I was just going to say, I'm afraid of that. Achievement gap reduction is what it stands for and it's our monies that we get.
Oops. It's our monies that we get, similar to the Sage grants. It's what keeps our class sizes low in kindergarten through third grade. Okay?
It's a sixteen and that used to be just about class size. And now you, you see that they're reporting like the instructional coaching and that. So when it was Sage, it was, that was, it was only about class sizes. Then it morphed into AGR, same pool of dollars, all of that stuff, but they've broadened the strategies that you can use to reduce those achievement gaps. And one of them is instructional coaching, one of them is one-on-one interventions, all of that stuff. So that's why they're recording those pieces out as well. Thank you.
So at the beginning of the school year, 11% of students were identified as being on or above grade level according to the I-ready data. Because we're looking at a growth goal, they have to take the test twice in order to determine growth. So there's not a beginning of the year baseline for that. At mid-year, at this point in time, currently we have 24% of our kindergarten students who are on or above grade level and 9% of our students have met their typical growth goal for the end of the year. And for first grade, 12% of our students are on or above their grade level goal and 21% of our students have met their typical growth goal. And for reading, it's the same goal. We are also using instructional coaching and again, class sizes are under 18 for kindergarten only. And our data at the beginning of the year in kindergarten, 12% of our students were on or above grade level. And at mid-year, we already know that 43% of our kindergarten students are on or above grade level and 11% additionally have met their typical growth goal. In first grade, at the beginning of the year, we had 5% of students were identified on or above grade level data. Yep. And in first grade, 20% of our students are on or above grade level and 21% of our students have met their typical growth goal.
Okay, Red Creek. Yeah. If you remember when we shared our, our report card, we were so close to that next level. And so we try to just keep this everywhere at Red Creek right now as we go through and it kind of fits in with our overarching sale goals that we've come up with as an admin team with our sale work, increasing student achievement and student empowerment. So again, that was a brainchild of Brandon's. So I'm so sorry that we're not measuring exactly the same way. So let me explain Red Creek a little bit. Our goal is the same, every grade, reading and math. So once we get it, this first slide, we should be good to go. We said that 75% of our students will make 55% or higher on their typical growth. And so again, you know, you can't measure that till we have two scores, so now we're able to look at that in the winter. We worked really hard with the trainer at the beginning of the school year to come up with this goal. And so it feels a little bit wonky, but you can see underneath the white boxes, the winter 66, that's where we're at in second grade reading. So we're on track to meet that 75% in second grade. Now the middle, the two white boxes are measuring and showing you different information. That wasn't my stomach. No, I'm just kidding. So the green is at or above grade level. So you can see how that's changed across. Yellow is one grade level below. And red is two or more grade levels below. So I just think that is an interesting piece of information that I-ready data shares with us. And then on the bottom, I also include the criteria that Red Creek is able to use in sharing out our AGR results. So the class size and instructional coaching. And that's in literacy done by Vicky Kramer. So same goal as far as that 75%. In math with second grade, in the winter, we were at 64%. Progress towards our 75%, so we're on track with that. But again, take a look at the green, on or above, yellow, one grade, red, two or more. So we're making some significant gains there. Third grade reading. It's exciting to see the red almost cut in half. Now, third grade math, you can see that at winter, we're not quite as on track. So that'll be interesting conversation to have with those teams of teachers to see what changes can we make to get us a little closer. And then I thought since we're already talking half of our school, why not share where we're at mid-year for the rest of the building? So even though fourth and fifth grade does not qualify for the AGR grant, I just wanted to share our data. It seems silly not to share the rest of our kids.
Wow. We're running our meeting too late. Yeah. We're usually done at eight and it shuts down. Okay.
So you can move to math. And this is fourth grade math. That yellow is always the chunk that we're just, you know, at all grade levels, that one grade level below. But hopefully we're on track to keep those kids growing into that green. Do you have any questions for Melanie or myself?
Oh, yes. And then I did our, yeah, this is Red Creek, all as far as that 75%. So 62% in reading, we're on track. So that feels pretty good, like we should be able to get there. And then in math, not quite as fantastic, but our math coaching gets done. We have Ashley Legear coming in to help coach all of our teams. She sits in with them during their common planning time a few times throughout the year. So that's how we're meeting our math instructional coaching. But I want to point out, as you remember, we had those are two different measures. That's growth. And then the top is, we drew a line in the sand of grade level achievement and what percentage of the kids got there. If you remember, we've talked for years about that RTI pyramid and the percentage of students that should be getting their needs met of each one of those. When you look at Red Creek as a pool in math, what the pyramid is supposed to be, 80 to 85% of the kids get their needs met in the tier one instruction. And then that next level that needs intervention is 10 to 15%. And we are down to 15% of the students that are in that two or more grade levels below. And so that is exciting to be approaching what the RTI pyramid says that we should. One other comment that I wanted to make about I-ready, this was the first year that we're using I-ready as opposed to the star reading assessment that we've used in the past. And last year, the middle school did the Aspire. They're also doing I-ready. The I-ready assessment, were you going to say all this?
No, I just couldn't stay in my spot.
Okay. You thought you gave that look. Is more rigorous. It is more closely aligned with the standards that the Wisconsin Forward is leveled at. And so we are very hopeful that hard-fought growth in this is going to result in that same positive results in the Wisconsin Forward exam. Any questions about this?
Thank you.
And now I would ask Chris and, can he share some news?
Good evening.
Hi.
First of all, about 200 students attended our snowball dance a couple of weeks ago. And last Friday, our FCC LA hosted a blood drive. Even though it was a cold day, you know, so no school, they still went on. And they didn't quite reach their goal. Of course, it was weather related, but they were pretty close. So they were pretty happy with the results. For ex, their competition and judging was tonight, so they were off in Galesville doing that and should be home within an hour. The boys' hockey won the Cranberry Cup over the weekend. Jackson McCormick and Caleb Dobson both advanced to sectionals in wrestling. And so there'll be, that'll be next Saturday for that. Please look at the school Facebook page. We have our music boosters taco supper tomorrow. It's a fundraiser, so we certainly would invite you to, to attend. And if you look on the Facebook page, it has the, the schedule of all the different music acts and different grade levels. And if you've got a certain child or grandchild you want to see, you can figure out what time they're there. Of course, we, we knew that boys' basketball had a, a game tonight. The seasons are starting to wrap up, so if you want to get that last ballgame in, this is the week for that. Girls play Verocua tomorrow night at home. Girls playoff hockey is Thursday and they'll be at home against Verocua. The boys will be traveling to Somerset that night. And then girls have a basketball game versus GT. Looking ahead, we also have the Dorian Band Festival and that'll be March 1st and 2nd. So a lot of things for the students to be in and wrapping up kind of the winter sports and activities. Any questions?
Well, Matt and Woods, if there hasn't been any of the reschedules necessary this year as winter sports are wrapping up.
Yes.
Not that we need that this week, but Jay is getting an easier start, I guess, at the rescheduling than, than last year.
Your report just kind of hit my heart for a second there. Our, our son who, who died, we always have tacos on the anniversary of his death as well as his birthday because the story is when he was a little guy, we took him to a buffet and he ate 17 of them and that's his favorite food. And tomorrow is his 38th birthday. It would have been his 30th birthday and we were trying to plan. So we'll, we'll see you. Thank you. It's perfect, perfect timing. Thank you.
Can you talk or share a few things?
Yeah, just a couple. As of February 3rd, all of the behavior programs have moved over to DePard and are up and running. So we've got behavior DEP program running. The EDP off-site program is up and running and so activity at this point is moving. And again, there was no period of getting used to things. We were up the first day, but are really working with the behaviors. The students in the DEP program have been amazing as far as helping around the building. They're, as far as community service, have taken on some of the roles, cleaning in the building and helping so that they feel pride in that building. And so they're doing some of the vacuuming and collecting the garbage and really have been very helpful. They've also been really helpful in mentoring some of the other students as far as some of the students ride their bikes around and so just helping with a lot of the students. So I can't speak highly enough about those behavior DEP students, that they're just amazing. It's been a great transition. The space has been really nice for a lot of our students because some of those students, we saw a lot more behaviors at the other school because the space was so confined. And now that they have space, it has provided us with so many more opportunities. And just how well the staff in that building are working together to support each other in each of the different programs has been great. So it's been, off to a great start.
I'd encourage you to stop in sometime. It is such a unique community over there because there's grades three through, second grade, second grade through 12th. And they all, and the adults all take responsibility for all of them and they just, it is, there's kids who are really struggling to find their place in the buildings and so would act out with some pretty significant behaviors. And it just, it, it gives them some elbow room and some proximity and some, it's, it's really going well. And Tammy's done a great job getting that all.
What's kind of cool, what's really neat, and maybe this isn't so deep, but so to me, it was kind of cool is we've got some students who are kind of finding their behaviors. Some kids who wanted to kick and hit a couple of us as if they were going through some behaviors. And some of the older kids stepped in and said, don't you dare kick her, don't you dare hit her, you know, you shouldn't be doing those things. And so some of the older kids are seeing these things and it's helped the older kids kind of put them to check a little bit as far as their behaviors. But they're also, it can mean so much more when it comes from another student to a student than an adult talking to those students. So it's been really neat to see how those other students are correcting the other students and helping them. So that's been amazing.
It's, it's just so very impressive how fast that got moving from the, the point that we approved it and up and running. I mean, congratulations and, and thank you for all of your hard work on that.
No, I would invite you all to come over anytime. We're, we're up and running.
We're up and running. The first kid arrives at 7:20 in the morning, so you can see things from 7:20 until 3 o'clock.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
That's an excellent point that you made, and there's just been so much agility on behalf of a lot of different people to make this happen. And I'm excited, excited at the possibilities.
Yes, okay, thank you. Now, we're at WASB reporting. Mary Jo Radcliffe, I know, made a report about her experience at the convention, and I'm wondering, do we want to address that now or should we let her do it next time?
I can bring it next time if that works.
Okay. Yes.
I didn't have a chance to attend a lot of sessions because of the meetings and my responsibilities I had as a director, but the one that I heard the most about was the session presented by the Barron School District. As you recall, they had the Jamie Claus situation last year, and when the FBI became involved, how it affected the school district, and it's still affecting the school district, and the amount of involvement that had to happen and supervision of the superintendent and finding out what the superintendent was going to wear because of the protection that she, that she needed, and, I mean, just the whole community. But they presented particularly on how it affects a school district when something like that happens. And it was the most talked-about session, I think, around the convention, and I think they're presenting, they're going to push it to go to the state or the national convention for presentation because of the federal involvement. But, and I liked all of the keynotes. I bought the Holly Hoffman book that we had at the breakfast, and I bought that for the school district, so anyone can go ahead and take that if they want and look through her things too. Anyone else want to share anything they had?
Okay. We'll move on to conference and workshop attendance, future agenda items. Anything to address?
I have, I have one.
Okay, that's okay.
I always, as I was looking through all of the things in all of the classes that do it, I couldn't remember if that was on our present agenda, that we just kind of know what's going on, like there's this D club and the, it would be kind of neat just to know how many of these different clubs that we have and what their mission is and what the system is.
And probably the memberships and attendance at those. Okay.
To know if the students are getting their extracurricular time.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.